At this time, I'll call the York County Council, October 2nd, 2023, county council meeting to order, welcome all of our visitors who are here today. And our first order of business is to recognize Tommy Atkins in District 3, who will lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us all be here tonight. Give us wisdom, guidance, and knowledge as we do the people's business. I pray it all in your son's name, amen.
Our first item is to do our oath of office for newly appointed board and commission members. When I call your name, if you'll please come forward and stand in front of the podium, and our attorney will meet you in the middle to swear you in to office. Annette Killian, Katava Regional Workforce Investment Board; Jeffrey Lyon, York County Culture and Heritage Commission, District 4; Isabella Bertelli, Keep York County Beautiful, District 7; and Cheryl Siege, Board of Assessment Appeals, District 3. And I apologize if I mispronounce names. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you for that. First of all, I do want to say on behalf of the council, thank you very much for your willingness to serve on these boards. You do it voluntarily, you don't get paid, and you rarely get thanked. We do want to thank you tonight, though, for doing that. The county can't conduct business without having folks like you sign up for these boards, and it's very important that you do that, and we appreciate you very much. Thank you again for agreeing to serve. We do have an appearance tonight. It's Carrie McGuire, who is the new director for Keystone, who will provide us an update and information regarding the opioid funding.
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with you. I am Dr. Carrie McGuire, Executive Director for Keystone Substance Abuse Services. I assume that position in mid-July. I've worked swiftly and diligently to get acclimated to all the different funding sources that are available to our agency through the county, through federal government, and a variety of other sources. Tonight, I am here to provide an update, answer any questions you might have for me about our use through Keystone of the South Carolina opioid recovery funds that have been afforded to us through the council for the county. And so, the handout that you have in front of you has our letterhead, our logo on top, so that if you could draw your attention to that, I'll just walk through that handout with you. But like I said, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me or hold them to the end, whatever you prefer is fine with me. So, the first thing I want to just refresh everyone's memory with are the abatement strategies. There are some specific abatement strategies that we're focused on with each of the interventions, treatment prevention, and other activities that we utilize through Keystone in the county. So, I've bulleted those out here just for your quick reference. So, the first one is treating opioid use disorder, or OUD. You'll see that abbreviated. And that's through medication-assisted treatment, MAT, distribution, and other opioid-related treatment that may be necessary to assist individuals who have been diagnosed with opioid use disorder. Second is supporting people in treatment and recovery. That includes co-occurring opioid use disorder with mental health needs. So, recognizing the concerns ongoing in our community and our state and nation with mental health in general, and recognizing the intersection of substance use disorders with those overall mental health needs and how they can be exacerbated through the use of substances. Third is addressing the needs of pregnant or parenting women in their families. And lastly, is the prevention programs that we utilize, which would be preventing the misuse of opioids among our population. So, again, as a refresher, specific funding uses. I recognize these things have been probably discussed before the council, before I was ever part of Keystone, so I want to just refresh everyone's memory. So, one of the uses is the cost of our MAT prescribing physician. We do have a full-time physician on staff for that purpose, who works with our patients to prescribe medication just as soon after assessment as we possibly can. That's part of our harm reduction strategy, recognizing that the sooner we can get prescriptions in the names of those individuals and administered, that that's going to reduce the likelihood that they're going to go out and use the way at the level that they were using previously, which hopefully will reduce opioid-related illness and death. Second would be the operational costs for our inpatient treatment. And we have a 14-bed facility that is our inpatient, and that is withdrawal management, often traditionally referred to as detox, plus a six-bed residential facility, which would be for longer-term stays with us. One of the things I'll point out about the residential beds would be that when we start talking about pregnant women, one of our priorities at the very, very top of our list has always been pregnant women, and our goal being to help mitigate the impacts of substance use on the unborn fetus, and hopefully bring forward a pregnancy that can deliver a fully healthy baby at the end. And I'm proud to say that not too, but just a couple of weeks ago, we had our 141st baby healthy born to a woman who had gone through our treatment program. So, I just want to highlight that as a priority. Residential scholarships, and this would be for uninsured, for withdrawal management patients in opioid use disorder diagnosis. So, we have many people who are either underinsured or uninsured, and we don't deny services based on that status. So, indigent patients can come to us, and we focus on making sure anyone from York County who needs those services has access, regardless of their ability to pay or insurance status. Peer support specialists for the Women's Treatment Program. One of the models across the state and the nation is to have individuals who are living in recovery, long-term recovery, coming alongside those that are in treatment, to help connect them to the recovery community, provide direct support and resource to them while they're in treatment and in the days, months, years following that treatment episode, however long that treatment episode may last. So, part of the funding that has come to us, New York County, is to supplement funding we already have in place for a peer support specialist that works specifically with our Women's Treatment Program. Good Samaritan training and naloxone distribution, often referred to as Narcan. That's the more common phrase we all hear is Narcan. Good Samaritan training is what we do in the community when we teach people about how to use Narcan appropriately. How do you know when to use it? We talk about the addiction cycle, physiological, psychological, so forth, and help folks understand exactly why overdose happens, and then what to do if you're in that emergency situation. And depending on who the audience is, if they want Narcan at that moment, we distribute it. If not, we make it known exactly how and where to get Narcan for free through Keystone. The funding also goes for three student assistance program clinical counselors. Again, this is supplemental funding. We do have another grant that will come to a close in the upcoming year, so we'll be talking with you all as we talk about further funding, about the need to be able to continue that. But we currently have a student assistance program clinical counselor based in every single school district in York County, and we receive through that direct referrals to that counselor within the schools. They provide services in the schools to address substance use and mental health needs for our students who will benefit from that. In addition to that, we teach a botfin. It's called botfin is the name of it, but life skills curriculum to our sixth graders in our middle schools, and our student assistance program counselors help with that. So, we have a prevention team from the agency that does that as well, but the student assistance program counselors are a significant part of that because they're in those schools and they already have relationships there. We also provide vaping 101 in the high schools, and that's a growing program. One district in the county implemented that this past year, and we have others who are asking for that. So, as we are able to provide that, we're doing that as well. More recently, we added to that YMC memberships for use by patients in residential treatment, recognizing that when we treat the whole person, we're helping to sustain recovery. And YMC memberships just helps with overall health and engagement and moving the body and all the benefits we know from exercise. So, we're able to provide that. And then clinical staff training, just to make sure that our clinical staff who are providing any kind of treatment are up to date on the most recent treatment modalities and trends within the realm of opioid use disorders and how we address those issues within a community and with specific individuals as they come forward needing that treatment and that intervention. So, when we talk about ongoing funding focus, we're going to continue doing these same things. That's our goal, is to continue tackling the issues that we already know are there and seem to be growing every day with overdoses in our community. And it's a heavy topic, but we know that we have the answers to help start to address it. It's a big social issue, so it's not an immediate wave of a magic wand, though I wish every day I had a magic wand that I could wave to make that impact. But one of the things that we want to do moving forward is continue focusing on, again, that intersection of substance use disorders with mental health as a whole. Prior to the pandemic with COVID-19, we had a treatment program, intensive outpatient program, that was for what we call co-occurring disorders. So, individuals who come to us or diagnosed with a substance use disorder and also have already been diagnosed or soon thereafter become diagnosed with some other mental health concern. So, that could be depression, it could be anxiety, it could be bipolar disorder. You listed, we're prepared to address it in collaboration with other community partners that also provide mental health services. That is a group that we're hopeful that we can bring back in the near future, and that is going to be a focus for, in addition to what I've already talked about, for future funding opportunities. So, I just wanted to highlight that one thing tonight. We will be seeking funding again on behalf of York County within the next coming week, the next couple of weeks. So, you'll see and hear more about that as we prepare to do that. If you turn your handout over, you'll see information and data about the impact and reach. So, under the treatment program area, you'll see that we have a patient head count, and that's for the dates January 1st through this past Friday, September 29th. So far, medication-assisted treatment, we've treated 483 individuals. In residential treatment, we've treated 66 individuals. Withdrawal management, we've treated 214 individuals. And in the Women's Intensive Outpatient Program, we've treated 53, for a total of 816 patients served to date this calendar year. When we talk about school-based initiatives, we do talk more on the academic calendar, academic year. So, for the academic year 2223, our student head counts for the botfin life skills under the prevention area was 863 sixth graders reached. In the prevention area vaping 101, 360 individuals reached. Other programming and prevention, this can be like presenting for parent groups or talking with students in other scenarios in the schools. You all know about things like Red Ribbon Week, or when we go into schools and we do like prom promises and prom pledges and things like that. It can be all those types of activities and more than I could possibly list here today. So, that's when we talk about other program, but that's 810 individual students reached. And then counselor referrals, that would be to the student assistance program counselors for either early intervention and screening and assessment to determine if further services are needed, or it can also include referral into treatment programs, and we do have an adolescent treatment program with Keystone. So, sometimes those students are going into those programs when a need for treatment is identified. And that was 166 individual student head count. I want to apologize that my total there at the bottom of that section is supposed to be 2,199. There is a typo, it says 2,149, but it's 199. So, that's my information for tonight. And again, I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be here and talk with you. I'm thankful also that you are trusting Keystone and that we can partner together to tackle the mental health and the substance use concerns that are happening in our communities. And I welcome any questions you have, if there are any.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. The opioid crisis is national, and it's something I think everyone in this room has been affected by someone we know or someone we love. We're very fortunate in this county to have such a great group that's looking into that, and we know that those funds are being used wisely, and we appreciate the information back. Do we have any questions or comments, Mr. Roddy?
I have two basic questions. Looking at these numbers, are any of the top portion, the treatment programs, any idea of, let's say, required or court-required to come for treatment? Do you have any breakdown on any of those in these numbers?
I don't have a breakdown of those numbers, but I can tell you approximately 85% of our patients who come through services are mandated in some fashion. So, that would be court-ordered, whether through family court or through, so maybe they had a DUI or something like that. That obviously wouldn't be a medication-assisted treatment necessarily, although it could result in that. But approximately 85% of our patients do come through court order or other mandated through DSS, other things like that.
Ms. Rallette?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for what you're doing. Great work.
Thank you.
The question I have is, under the inpatient treatment, I know you stated eight vets for managing withdrawal and six beds for residential. Are you seeing an overflow sometimes occur where that is not enough?
We do have times where we have to turn patients away, and we do have a process for prioritizing those admissions and waiting, waitlisting, and we make contact just as soon as we possibly can. But we've also been in a position to increase our same-day admissions. So, if we have someone who pulls up in the parking lot and walks up to the door, and we have a bed available and there's nobody else waiting, we will take that person immediately.
Gotcha. Is it now, are you, and I'm not sure if this is something that, and I may have heard it, that I just want to get clarity on it. Is there a partnership with Pathways when there is an overflow situation? Or I know you guys have a partnership.
So, our partnership with Pathways is to try to support when they have clients come into the door for services, and they self-identified a need for some sort of intervention related to substance use. We have staff on site, and we're actually in the process of increasing the hours per week that we have staff there to go ahead and receive a warm handoff of that individual. If they needed inpatient, that peer support person would assist with being a conduit to inpatient treatment, whether that's withdrawal management or residential.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. McGuire.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
We next move to our public forum session. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to come forward before we engage in our actual voting on action items, to come forward and to speak in front of council. It's your time to speak, it is not ours, so we don't address questions. We ask that you, when you sign up, that you follow the rules that are included on there, which is when you get up there, first state your name, give your address, and then if you'll keep your comments to something that's within council jurisdiction and refrain from personal attacks since there's no response back. And if there is a public hearing item, we only have a few folks that signed up today, but if you are here about an item that is a public hearing item, you can wait until then, and you're not limited in your time to speak. Speaking at this time, we allow folks to come and speak for two minutes. And so, what I would ask that you do is pay attention to the screen, and it'll go to a yellow flashing, and then it'll go to red when the two minutes is up. If you'll kindly pay attention to that and cut off your comments there, then I will not have to. First is Lacey Lane.
My name is Lacey Lane of Fort Mill, and I'm extremely concerned that six out of our seven council members here are also members of the York County GOP, a group that threatens council members when they don't vote their way. At the August meeting, a councilman felt the need to explain himself to the YCGOP for voting no on the ordinance to reduce the library board from 10 to seven members. The councilman voted with respect for his district and the democratic process. Yet, he was vilified by the YCGOP for doing so. This resulted in him being told, and I quote, "Don't find yourself on the wrong side because it won't go well, and for others like you when it comes time for elections." Money from extremists comes with strings. If these six council members respect their district and respect democracy, then it's time to cut those strings. You represent all of your constituents, not the York County GOP. It's the council's job to appoint members to our county boards based on resident applications. At the August YCGOP meeting, the same councilman stated that he knows who he will appoint for his library board seat when it comes open 10 months from now, 10. How is that even possible when residents haven't applied yet? He shared his excitement for the future appointment to, quote, "push a conservative agenda." How can any of you believe that that is okay to say or do? There should be no agendas pushed, just people on boards who applied with integrity, who are qualified and ready to serve our community. It's been stated repeatedly that council members plan to appoint conservative board members. But where in board applications does it ask for political leanings? Even our council chairwoman chimed in to tell her fellow YCGOP members to get out there and apply for every board, and that our council clerk can help them keep up with board openings. These actions and intentions are unethical and irresponsible. Council members, please don't let your political ambitions overwhelm your responsibility as public servants to make good decisions on behalf of all of us, not just your party, not just your voters, not just the extremists wagging the dog. Please have the courage to cut the strings and do better.
Thank you, ma'am. Tenley Middleton?
Tenley Middleton, Fort Mill. Good evening. My name is Tenley Middleton. I have been a resident of York County for over 20 years. I have been married for 23 years, and I have two children ages 19 and 12. The York County Public Library has a mission to enrich and sustain the lives of the people of York County by providing library services that meet their informational, recreational, and lifelong learning needs. Having a well-funded, well-maintained, and well-supported library system is in our citizens' best interest. I have heard council repeatedly state that they are not interested in defunding the public library. However, when we accessed emails via FOIA request, we found this not to be true. There was talk by county council members of defunding the public, of defunding the public library. The emails blatantly show a council member requesting that the library be defunded, and another councilperson concurring with that request. I have repeatedly heard council say that they have no control over the public library or library board. But council has the responsibility of appointing the library board members. County council members have met with the York County GOP to identify conservative candidates and fast-track their appointments to boards and committees. All of this obscures the real issue, which is that our residents are underserved by the public library. The library board needs support so that they can continue to advise the great work being done across the county. They need support so that they can advise the growth necessary for library services to reach every resident. And they can't do that when their makeup is continually manipulated for political gain. How is that in the best interest of York County residents? We are asking for transparency. We are asking for our library board members and our library staff to be treated with professionalism and respect. We are asking for the library to continue to be funded, in fact, better funded, and to be allowed to offer great resources and services without this unnecessary interference. And ultimately, we are asking that the county council support the public library in their mission to enrich and sustain the lives of the people of York County.
Thank you, ma'am. Scott Coquenour. I think I got it right. Last time, I pronounced the French version.
You got it right. Hey, everybody, Scott Coquenour, 122 West Oak Street in the beautiful Whiteville Park neighborhood in Fort Mill, South Carolina. IndyLand 83, fortunately, I was able to go to Homecoming a couple of weeks ago. About 50 of us got together. IndyLand won. I do announce football, Katava Ridge. We beat South Point in the first quarter, but then we lost the game anyway. And IndyLand hung with York, but they ended up losing. So, and Fort Mill High School did win a football game last week for the first time in two years. So, and Coach Allen has South Point, I mean, has Nation Ford going in the right direction, too. So, they're about 50-50 on the season. So, I am here on property, commercial property, Sewer Track 31. It was read in executive session and came out of executive session and voted on and passed. I would just like for that to be entered into the minutes for the meeting and the media packet, if available for that. And that same property, for about two years now, I've been dealing with Patrick Hamilton. He's been very respectful of my time and getting back with me. But the Sutton Road 21, that interchange is becoming five lanes, and it's affecting my complete building. So, just getting started in that process. So, we're kind of in the due diligence now, where it's been turned over to right-of-way acquisition. And I am the only one on email chain that is not getting paid for their time or reimbursed for their time, and I'm the only one on there not getting reimbursed for attorney's fees or has an attorney available. So, it's at the part now, this is a major, major part of my family's retirement. I got one more year to pay the building off in 18 years. And I'm at the point now where we're pulling out $100,000 out of an investment account of our own money to get started on this. The sewer project was a complete waste of my time, and I felt like I was, got cut in half. And we will do everything we can within our ability financially to do that. So, I just want to again, thank y'all.
Thank you.
We move now to, that concludes our public forum session. Do we have a motion on consent agenda? Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to our first public hearing item, which is on page 10 of the agenda packet. Public hearing, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 23-36, tax map number 72600037, to rezone from UD to LI, 5.63 acres in District 7. Do we have any staff report?
We do. So, this application is on Flint Hill Road in the Fort Mill area, just south of 51. The property is just over five acres. And from the area here, it looks like it's plenty treed, but that is not the case anymore. The site was essentially cleared, and a business was set up without any permitting for that. So, there was a litany of violations that came with that action. And so, this is a rezoning to bring that site into compliance. The applicant is proposing to establish a boat and RV storage facility and a trucking operation. Neither of those uses is allowed in the current UD district. So, an approved rezoning would allow the applicant to proceed with a zoning compliance application to legally establish the use that is there. Staff recommends approval of this request. It is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. The uses are similar to those that are in the vicinity, and it does have nearby access to I-77, which would make sense for a trucking operation. And this would also remove another parcel from the legacy UD district. By a seven-to-zero vote, Planning Commission likewise recommends approval.
Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? Hearing none. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? If you'll please come forward and give your name and address.
Yes, my name's Damian Hudson. I'm on half the land with my brother. That picture that was there is not a picture of that land. We have not gotten that far. That is a three or four doors down. I just wanted, we have not established that. We have stopped, so I didn't want the board to think that we had went that far. That's not our, that's not our land, that picture was there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We move now to our second public hearing item, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 23-37, tax map number 28200013, to rezone from AGC to RUD, 5.71 acres in District 2. Mr. Blono?
Yes, this application to rezone from AGC to RUD is on a parcel just under six acres. There is an existing home here on Lawrence Road, and the applicant is proposing to rezone so that they can subdivide and build one additional home. Staff recommends approval of the application. It's mostly consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. It is directly adjacent to the rural residential land use designation that would be appropriate for the proposed subdivision. The property is not currently used for agricultural purposes, and parcels of a similar size and district are in the immediate vicinity. By a seven-to-zero vote, Planning Commission likewise recommends approval.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, but public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Jonathan, I do have a question. I probably should have asked it a few minutes ago, but I think in our packet, it said that you didn't recommend any restrictions on this, but could this actually end up being a property that has more than two houses on it under RUD?
Under RUD, you're only allowed to have one house, so if they intend to move forward with having a second house, they would have to subdivide. So, this rezoning action doesn't entitle them automatically to have a second home. They still have to take the next step of subdividing.
Well, I thought this, I thought this was to build a second home. I thought.
It is. So, this is the first step in the process. The subdivision would be the next step.
Okay. We'll talk between now and second reading.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. We do not have any old business tonight. We'll move now to new business. We only have one item. Council to hold a discussion regarding Keep York County Beautiful, Planning Commission, York County Culture and Heritage Commission, and Rock Hill York County Convention and Visitors Bureau. This request was made by Mr. Roddy, and several council members supported it. Do you want to start us?
Absolutely. We all remember several weeks ago, possibly maybe a month and a half ago, we had the big booming discussion about books in the library, and it turned into concerns about why a library board has 10 members. We ultimately changed the ordinance that took us from 10 board members down to seven board members. And I said on that night, if we were going to do this and put the library board under any kind of scrutiny and reduce their board without having this public discussion, just go through a committee, say we're going to do it, then those of you who voted for this, if you're going to vote for the seven members on the library board, we need to bring every single board before this council and take a long, hard look at what we're going to do with those, because we've been pretty much put in the spotlight of being hypocritical and making haste decisions to reduce that board. So, I wanted to have this public discussion as to about every other board that has more than seven members, because I felt that on that night and even before that night, that what we were doing, we didn't really explain to the public, we didn't really have justification to do it, but we did it anyway. So, I wanted to bring every board that has more than seven members back before this body, and we can bring them in, we can march them in one by one to have them justify whether they need more than seven or want more than seven or don't need it. But I think we took the wrong measure of reducing that board that night without thoroughly vetting it on the heels of what was brought to us that wasn't our business about the books in the library. So, we need to have that discussion, because I know, and I gave my word to, and I didn't vote for, but if any of you voted for it, and which majority of council did, and I respect the wishes, but we can't just do things to one and don't consider doing it to all, because there's more than one board that's still out there that has more than seven members. And I'll go on record to say, if you did it for the library board, and you don't want to entertain the motion or the notion to do it for others, you're being hypocritical. That's my personal opinion. You're more than welcome to defend your position on how you voted or not voted, but I think we owe it to the public to justify why we're going to leave other boards and commissions alone and only single out our library board. So, that's where I stand, and I wholeheartedly say, bring every board across the board to seven members. If we don't consider doing that, we've done an injustice to those who serve on boards, those who support each individual board, whether it pertains to them professionally, personally, or publicly. So, that's my statement. I'd like to have us consider reducing all the boards. I don't care if it's the Planning Commission, CVB, whatever's out there, because we did it to the library board without having a real thorough public conversation as to why we felt the need to go to seven. That's my comment.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments?
Yeah. Yeah, I do real quick. Two things. I want to separate this discussion, first of all, in regards to the size of any of the boards and the size of reducing that board. You made a comment about us not being involved with books, and my opinion on here is that we've got residents out there that have kids and grandchildren that were concerned about going into the children's section of these libraries and walking in and picking these books off the shelf. So, I think it is our duty to be involved with those discussions. The next thing is the boards, and I thought that we made it clear that night. I'm in favor of bringing every board down to seven. I think having it down to one representative per district, it balances it out across the board. So, I am in favor of bringing these other boards down to seven, because I think we had that discussion that night, and I think for a balanced approach for each of these boards, it's one representative per district, and that makes it a balanced approach. I agree.
I agree.
So, the thing that I don't know is how did boards get to where they are today? I'm not sure any of us on council can answer that question. As an example, the York County Museum Board is at seven. We know why they're at seven. We know what happened in the past that got them to seven. The CVB Board has 15 members. Keep York County Beautiful has 14. Planning Commission has seven with two at-large. So, here's, here's, here's what I'd like to share with you. I'm going to agree with Bump that I think we have a responsibility to complete due diligence, and due diligence means to have a conversation with these boards and commissions and get feedback from them, because these boards have officers, they have committees, and they all have different, well, they don't all have officers, but some have officers and some have committees, and they all, the committee numbers vary. So, what we don't know, and some have at-large members and some would prefer at-large members, so what's the reason behind the numbers? I know for me, when I've served on boards before I got involved in politics, one of the first things I did as a board member is I said, okay, can I, can you help me get my head around what responsibilities we have to this particular not-for-profit? And so, whatever those responsibilities were, I personally wanted to make sure we had a committee and people serving on the committees to fulfill the mission of that not-for-profit. And often, that took far more than seven, 10, 12 people, when you really laid out the committees you needed to support. And some of you are going to say that you can still do that, but how many people are going to serve on a board when they can't vote? I think it's going to be more difficult to have people serve on a board when they don't have the ability to vote. So, last thing I'll say is that I'm not in favor of reducing the boards. I'm open-minded to listening. I want to hear from those entities that are affected by us reducing their, their board numbers. But if we do reduce the board numbers, as a council member representing District 6, if I'm going to make an appointment to a board or commission, I would pretty much expect that person to be on the board and the commission that I appointed them for, that I sent them an application for, the conversation I had with them to vet out them being the right candidate for that board, I would expect my appointment to get appointed. It shouldn't be at the discretion of a committee or anybody else's appointment up here. That's not what I'm in favor of, but if we head down that road, I do want to make sure that that criteria is in place. Somebody on this, this council appoints someone to a board, that is your appointee, and they're held accountable to you, in my opinion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other comments?
I was just going to say, that's kind of been the way it's been in the past since I've been on council. If someone pulls up, someone says, move that application forward, no other council member should hold that appointment up, because that person's being selected from that district to also be a spokesperson and represent that district. I would hate for someone to apply that I've asked or who've come to me and I've spoken with, and then have someone from another district, you know, conjure up something, and all of a sudden, that person doesn't make it through. We've always been respectful of each district's appointment, because that's one of the very few things that we directly control, and I wouldn't want to lose that, that, that authority to put someone on the board who I've spoken with, who wants to do it, because it has happened in the past. Someone has put forth someone to be in that position, and they didn't make it through because two, three, or four other council members from other areas didn't want that person to serve. I can personally attest that has happened, and I didn't agree when that happened, but it has happened, and it shouldn't happen. So, we definitely want, it's an unwritten rule, it's not written anywhere, but it's kind of the lay of the land that this is not supposed to happen when someone puts up a board member that they don't make it through from their specific district. So, I agree with Watts that we don't need to do that, and if it ever happens again, we need to have a serious conversation about it.
So, I believe that, you know, different districts elect who, who they, the person of their choosing, and doesn't mean they always get it right, but it means that they've elected someone as, as a majority, and as, that, that hopefully makes for a very balanced county council. And I think for, for the most part, we, we are very, we're balanced, and we represent those districts, and all of our districts are very different, and I feel like our boards should be just as balanced as, as we are. So, you know, we, we, I do, I'm just going to say this about the library. I do feel like the library board was not balanced, and I think we are working toward having a balanced library board, and it may be there now, it may not be there now, but, you know, over time, historically, we have appointed people sometimes not knowing who the person is or why they want to serve. Our, our application is very, we, there are questions, but we get very brief answers. You know, I just want to serve my community. I've said this for a long time. That's, that's not good enough. That's not a good enough answer for, for, to serve District 2, in my opinion, if I'm putting you on a board. I want to know, why do you want to serve? What, what, what's, what makes you want to serve? And I want a good answer. So, I spend a lot of time talking to applicants, and I sit down, I meet with applicants and, and try to figure out who, who is the very best person that I can put on that board. You know what? And it doesn't matter what background they come from, it doesn't matter how they vote. It's, to me, it's a matter of, you know what? Who's going to best represent the people of, of our district? It's very important that we get that right. So, you know, I am not opposed to reducing all of the boards to seven, because I feel like that is a balance, it's a balancing act that begins with, with us as a council, who we, who we put on there and why we put them on there. It's very important that we respect each other's districts. You know, we could sit down, it would, it'd be kind of fun to sit down, all of us around a table at some point, and just say, you know, what, what is it that makes our districts unique? What, what makes District 2, District from, different from District 7, and 3, and 1, and 4? I mean, what, what are the differences? And if we all respect those differences, oh my gosh, we'd be so much better off. And, and then if we respect those people who have been elected by the majority and who they want to put on a board, who they want to represent the people, and hope that when all of those people come together for their own board or committee meeting, they are just as balanced in representation, all of, in representing all of York County. Those boards and commissions, they do not answer to us. So, the most influence we have is who we put on a board. So, I, I do feel like, you know, I see both sides of the library issue, and I think it's kind of been blown a little bit out of proportion. I think we're on our way to having a better balanced library board. You know, there was a time when we had a fire, a fire tax district board that we had to totally do away with that board, and we didn't do away with all the fire tax district boards. We could have had that same type of problem across, across the whole, all of our district boards. So, sometimes we resolve things as they come up, and sometimes it's an extreme measure, but it, but in the end, I think, you know, nine times out of 10, we'll, we'll get that right, and, and sometimes it's just in the long run instead of the short run. So, I don't disagree with you, Bump, that we, that, I, I don't think there's any detriment to making all of these boards seven, seven members.
I think the council has spoken, and it seems with respect to our discussion, we're looking at Keep York County Beautiful, Planning Commission, the Heritage Commission, and York County Convention and Visitors Bureau. With respect to those, there's, there's a clear majority of council that wants to go ahead and put this on the next agenda and take each one of them individually and decide whether or not, how we want to address them. I do want to say that when council makes decisions, we do need to move on from those. Council voted five to two to make the library board change, and it was done at a time where folks were rolling off, so that was the time to make that change. And it made it consistent with the fact that there are only two boards in the county that are county-appointed that have special tax mileage associated with them. That means when you get your tax bill in, there are two boards that have specific mileage that you see on your tax bill, and that's the CHC and the library board. What that action did was bring both of those boards in alignment to have seven board members that vote. There are ex officio voting members on, on them, but they, on the other board, but they don't have the ability to vote, so reducing them certainly doesn't create an issue. All of those appointees that were made, that decision was made sometime in June or July, and all of the FNO recommendations were made to the board before any of those meetings, and it was approved. All of the appointees to that board were approved unanimously by consent, so this council is in agreement with what occurred with that. I personally would support, and I don't mind tipping my hand on kind of how I philosophically think about these things. Planning Commission going to seven members, I think, makes sense. One member per district, and that way you don't have individuals who represent or have dual representation in an area where there can even be a possibility for, for dual representation. The CHC eliminating those ex officio board members, they don't have a voting right, so I think that those make sense. When it comes to the CVB and the, and the Keep York County Beautiful, reaching out and being, I've reached out to those board members specifically or to the boards, and they have a group, because it's hard to find people who want to go deal with trash and pick up trash, and the more people you have on that, the better. So, I think that's where we stand. It looks like we're going to move forward with that on the next council agenda meeting, and we'll just, we'll take each one of them individually and, and each council member. I mean, maybe my mind will change if someone comes up and says something differently, but I think we'll have that discussion if we can just move on.
And I was going to say, I'm not opposed to it if it can be justified as to why that board feels they need to have more, but we do definitely need to have that discussion, because like Watts said, there may be committees that help turn the wheels of that particular board. We don't even, I'm sure everybody up there doesn't know all the ins and outs of every single board, so we would like to hear from those who would like to say, hey, we would like to keep more than seven. Here's the reason why. You know, I'm not just saying just cut it, but at least we got to have that discussion and do it publicly, so people know why we didn't cut this particular board versus leaving it up to guesswork of just saying, you just cut the library board.
So, we've got direction. If we can move on, we've still got a big night, and we've got people here, so if we can.
Can I just ask one?
Can we please, y'all?
Well, I just want, are we going to be extending invitation to the boards and commissions to come to the meeting?
I think they should be made aware.
Or we're just going to assume they heard this? Pardon me?
Certainly can be made aware.
Okay. Thank you.
I was, I was just going to make the suggestion, like even looking just at the Keep York County Beautiful, you know, we have a vacancy, an example, we have a vacancy District 2 and District 4, but as I look down the at-large members, you know, we've got a very engaged person who is an at-large member from District 2, so if we can maybe finance some operations, maybe that's the appropriate committee to look at some of these that are, you know, could move from an at-large position into those vacant district.
I think for all those boards, that'd be a great idea to go ahead and look at that transition being made. All right. So, we have some direction there. Committee and other reports. We have Public Works Committee meeting. The chairman, Bump Roddy.
Yes, we met on last Wednesday. Myself, Debbie, and Tommy, some of the Public Works Committee. One of the first items that we covered was the resolution to support a House and Senate bill that's in Columbia pertaining to us keeping animals while someone's waiting to kind of answer to some charges, because we're incurring a lot of expenses when we house animals waiting for someone to go to court. I think this, this House bill will definitely free up some options for the individuals to sign those over to us, and we can adopt them out, or if they're not good animals, they can be euthanized. Right now, we can't do that, and as long as there's an ongoing legal situation, but we do have the house, feed, and take care of these animals while the legal process plays out. This, what they're working on in Columbia, this resolution says that York County supports that, and trying to encourage our state delegation to go ahead and move that through the process. So, counties like York County and other counties who have large animal populations that are due to illegal activity or what have you, that we can free up that, those resources. The other issue that we took up was talking about putting stickers and tags on county vehicles or anyone in York County to be able to access our recycling centers or convenience centers. We kind of got away from that, but we've discussed that in the past, and it came back up again, but we had the discussion, we're going to not implement any kind of tag identification on vehicles that use our recycling centers, because we did vet that several years ago, but we have obviously new members that wanted to have that discussion. And the last, but the last thing that was on there was, we had some talk about adding a basically litter control officer who would work the grounds at some of our recycling centers. and possibly at the landfill, uh, for people who are coming in with uncovered loads or people who are, or are bringing items to, to dump that doesn't supposed to be there. Obviously, some, we had the discussion also about that individual being a, um, firearm-carrying individual. We've kind of moved away from that, but we decided to hold off on that discussion, because it's adding a new employee. We want to have that around budget talk time as to how we would implement a new employee on staff. Because right now, we didn't budget for a new officer, uh, to come on board. And I think the committee would definitely agree that we feel strongly about this officer not carrying a firearm, even when we do have this discussion and a new individual.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy. We also have Finance and Operations Chairwoman, Allison Love.
Finance and Operations Committee met today at 5:30. Present were, um, Councilman Atkins and, um, and, um, Aldette. And, uh, we did make some, um, consider some applications for service for several boards, one of which is one of the boards that we're talking about, maybe reducing. I'm not sure how we go, where we go from here on that one. But, um, the Board of Disabilities and Special Needs, we made the recommendation for Johnny Bowler for a first term. The Lake Wilely Marine Commission, a second-term recommendation for Quay Williford, and a first-term recommendation for Ray, Raymond Williams. Cataba Mental Health Board, um, the recommendation for Janelle Stevens for a first term. The Rock Hill, York County Convention and Visitors, Visitors Bureau, the recommendation, the consideration of the appointment of Chip Hutchison for a second term. That is an at-large member, so we may have to talk about that one. Bethel Lake Wiley Land Acquisition and Preservation Park District Board made the recommendation for the appointment of Jamie Hendrickson and Anne Vialanti. Oakdale Fire Tax District Board, the recommendation for Johnny Starnes for a first term and Donald Beckler for a first term. We deferred the York County Forever, um, application for, um, Andrew Lidle to our, to our next Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Um, we also discussed the procurement changes. Um, we got a summary of that. That was in our last, um, our last agenda for council meeting, and we wanted to get a little more information on that. So, one of the major changes to this is we're basically raising the requirements to, to open, I think, open things up. Um, one of those things would be for the fire departments, we would go from a $3,000, I'm sorry, from a $2,500 limit to, um, $10,000, which would be that the fire departments would be able to do what they want to do up to $10,000 with their barbecue money. Um, I think that would make them very happy. Um, the, um, On Call Architect Engineering Services would go from a $75,000, they would go to a $75,000 maximum. That is for pre-qualified consultants. Um, and that was previously $29,999. Um, and then, um, we would also made the recommendation, we would like, On Call always sounds like it costs more to us. And so, um, we, it sounds like people are working the weekends, you know? Um, and so, we wanted to rename On Call. Um, we want to change that terminology to pre-qualified. So, um, I think that was everything on that. And then we also have some discretionary funds that have been allocated, recommendation for. Um, so, we considered the allocation of funds from District Four to the Love and Cherish Family Center Food Pantry, pantry in the amount of $4,000. Commitment to consider allocate, sorry, we considered the allocation of funds from District Four to Eden Community Development Corporation in the amount of $4,000. Uh, the allocation of funds from District Three to Divine Fountain of Hope in the amount of $2,000. The, um, and then we had, um, the procurement, and we approved the minutes from the last meeting, and we had a nice finance update. It's early on, um, in the year for, for, um, our finance and operations up, uh, finance updates, but, um, we got that, and, and things are looking good. But we're just a month into our, into our year, so, and that was it.
Thank you, ma'am. We do not have any citizen concerns tonight. Are there any council member new knowledge in the comments? Before we move, we do have a good bit to handle.
Yeah, yeah, a few quick comments. So, for the public's use, um, our website that the county has offers many different things, whether you need online services, um, et cetera. One of the, um, sections in there is a, is a review of our parks. If you are interested in our parks, go to our York County website. Um, there's videos on the parks. It's, it's very, it's very intuitive, and it's, it's a great site. So, again, just sharing that with the public on that. Um, the discussion we had on the last council meeting around the Board of Elections, I'd like to, or comments I made in a non-agenda section, I'd like to move that Board of Election discussion to our next workshop, because I think there's an opportunity to discuss around how our Board of Election officers are elected. I know the legislative bodies involved in it, but I think that there's more opportunity for us to be closer to the process, and I'd like to go ahead and move that to our next workshop. The last thing I do want to mention to you, um, in January of this, of this year, we started in Fort Mill, Tiki Kane, Lake Wiley, and this is going to be a repeat, a program called Access Transportation for the Elderly and Disabled. It's an on-demand service where if you call a number, they can schedule to be brought to a doctor's appointment, pharmacy, grocery store. We never had it in there. We started in January, and it's been a big hit for the elderly and disabled in the area. For the public's purpose, I want to read this phone number, 803-327-6694, option two. If you know anybody that needs this service, share that number with them. They can call in advanced, schedule a ride, and I tell you, it's making a big impact in our area. So, just want to share that with you. Again, 803-327-6694, option two. Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr.?
Uh, real quick, I have two things. Looking forward to another Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. John has been working on some, adjusting some of the language that surrounds our tattoo establishments. Couple of different versions for Planning and Zoning to, to meet up. I know David's going out of town, so we'll try to catch up soon as she gets back. And also, I'd like to hear from, um, registration and election. I know we've been waiting on the signed agreement from the City of Rock Hill about moving their elections, um, to our regular scheduled election dates. I know we were supposed to have gotten something from them. Just want to know where we at, if they've signed it, what's to hold up? Because it's definitely something that's important.
Excuse me, they changed their ordinance. They will be on the cycle after this October's election. They'll be on the November cycle in the following election.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, York County has a number of homeless, transitional housing shelters, shelters for battered and abused adults and children. And what I found out recently is cumulatively, not sure exactly what the number is, but it appears that there's over $1.2 million a year being spent on monitoring, monitoring and security at these facilities across, um, York County. Could even be a couple of million dollars for all we know. So, I called our Assistant County Manager, had a conversation with him, and asked him. I said, "Would it be appropriate if York County and auditor would take a look at this and actually determine, uh, how much money is being spent across the county for monitoring and security at these facilities?" Um, and we have a lot of those facilities scattered across the county. So, can we come up with how much money is being spent, and why is it being spent? Most of these organizations have a security officer there from 6:30 in the evening until 6:30 in the morning, and then they have monitoring 24/7. So, if there's a more efficient way to do this, when you think about what the mission is for these entities, to think that they're spending $2 million a year, and maybe there's an initiative that could cut it in half possibly, so it opens up another million dollars to do something significant in these areas, then I think it should be considered. So, he is in agreement that he would have an internal auditor, um, create and complete the study, and also define the reason why they have security. What's the purpose? And then come back to us and report, and then we can possibly take action. Anybody opposed to the county doing this?
I think we'll have to take that up at a appropriate time with council.
You want to refer it to a committee?
I don't think we need to refer anything right now. You're talking about referring the whole item of?
For, for county auditor to actually determine how much money is being spent. There's been a request.
So, do you want a management report on that?
Yeah.
Okay. I think a management report on that's fine.
Okay.
Then we can.
All right.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Allison?
I just want to invite everybody out to Curtain Farms on Saturday. It is Curtain Farm Fest. Come on over to Clover. It's from 10 to 4. It's a great day. Bring the kids. You, you can spend all day there shopping with some local vendors and artisans. And, um, also, um, they, they've got great food trucks. This is, I think they're, I don't know, I think this might be the ninth year that they've done this. And it gets bigger and better every year. So, they're out on Param Road. You can look up Curtain Farms on Facebook, and, um, just invite you to come out and, and have, enjoy a little farm life for a day.
Mr. Conder.
Okay. We started October in Fort Mill in a big way. And that is the Fort Mill History Museum will begin their Lanterns and Legends tours. And that is beginning on October the 5th. Uh, it's a walking tour, so put your tennis shoes on and your jackets. Hopefully, it's going to get cool enough here. And you're going to hear some really fantastic, um, legends in Fort Mill.
Anything?
Glad to have brought it another day.
All right, we are, that concludes our, um, council non-agenda comments. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Uh, personal matter, we've got, uh, four items here. We've got a motion for personal matter, annual review of county manager, uh, county attorney and clerk to council, receipt of legal advice, litigation update, receipt of legal advice, contractual matters, Project Freedom I, Project Freedom II, receipt of legal advice, contractual matter, former franchise territory.
We have motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move straight into executive session in the back. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Moken in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.